I'd like to call the Lane County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order for Tuesday, January 5th, 2016. And the first item on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. And I will note that we are going to pull Item 6C1 from the consent calendar for discussion, and that there is no executive session scheduled today. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, then we'll move on to Item 2A, and I'll turn this over to Commissioner Stewart.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my honor today to recognize you for your service as Chair of the Board of Commissioners for 2015. It's been my pleasure to serve on the agenda team as Vice Chair and to work hand-in-hand with you to schedule the work that we got done. I think yesterday you capsulized our year very well, and it was neat to hear of all the things that we were able to accomplish. So, that doesn't happen by itself. It takes leadership, and I appreciate your leadership in doing that. There was a couple items that, you know, highlighted for me personally that I think you have championed for West Lane for your citizens. One was the Archie Knowles Campground that you worked hand-in-hand with staff to find a way to get that reopened and made that happen. And then you worked with the local Fernridge Public Safety District. And, you know, I just wanted to highlight those two items that, you know, you've, in my opinion, worked really hard for your citizens to find solutions and improve in your communities. So, thank you very much for that. Traditionally, we have the board gavel that we pass on to you. This is presented to Jay Bozovich in gratitude for his service as Board Chair for Lane County Commissioners for 2015. And then traditionally, I like to give a card and a little thank you for you. You know, with our requirements under the ethics law, we can't give more than $50, but I hope there's enough in there that you can treat your wife to a nice dinner. So, I appreciate your service and thank you for it.
Well, as you all are aware, you know, being Chair requires you to attend a lot of ceremonial functions and take your time away from the wife, so she'll appreciate maybe some, a little bit of payback. So, I appreciate it. I enjoyed being Chair this year and enjoyed being able to give a wonderful State of the County yesterday, and I have to thank all the board. You know, I tried to make sure I pointed out where you all were involved in some of the accomplishments, but I particularly want to thank the Administrator, Mr. Mokrheyski, for a great year. I mean, a lot of work was done under his leadership by staff, and a lot of the accomplishments I listed in that State of the County were due to his leadership. So, I really appreciate the help, Steve, and the help your staff gave me in putting together that address yesterday. So with that, then we'll move on to Item 2B, which is the election of the Chair, and I will accept nominations for Chair now. Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Stewart as Chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for Chair? Are there any other nominations for Chair? Are there any other nominations for Chair? Robert's Rule says you're supposed to ask three times. We do Robert's Rules. Technically, it's in our...
I'm glad that's on the record.
Yeah. When needed. Yeah, that's what we're supposed to defer to. So, with no other nominations, I will call for, you know, first ask if the Chair, if the nominee has anything to say and...
Well, this is one of those moments when it feels like the train's coming down the tracks, but, you know, traditionally, I believe we moved the Vice Chair up to the Chair position. We didn't do that last year because I felt it was important that your service had been on this board without the opportunity to be Chair, and so kind of broke from that a little bit. But I'm honored that my colleagues want to see me guide the county this next year, and I appreciate your confidence in me and with your service. Selective.
So with that, we'll move on to the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, and I will turn the meeting over to Commissioner Stewart. I want to... Yes, we can switch. Slide over.
So with that, we'll move on to Item 2C, which is the election of the Vice Chair. This time, I'd take nominations for Vice Chair. Commissioner Sorenson.
I'll nominate Commissioner Farr. Second.
Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
It passes four to one. Congratulations, Commissioner Farr. We're deserving with you. All right. So we will move on to Item 3, which is our public comments, and we may have, it looks like, one individual. So I'd like to welcome Mr. McFadden. Please, if you're ready, please come to the podium, and I'll give you three minutes to speak, state your name, and I guess, city of residence.
Good morning. Happy New Year, everyone. I'm Mike McFadden from Eugene. In case you haven't noticed about me, something that I really find interesting is how people interact with one another. I kind of like to observe it as a third party and just kind of draw insights from it, not just two individuals, but groups, organizations, even, you know, large-scale groups, like political boundaries and stuff. I just think that it's really interesting how all that comes about, and do a lot of reading about it. And you've all heard me kind of mention the subject of moral hazard before, which I think is an issue, I think that the biggest way it's an issue in our county is, you know, with a struggling justice system, there are a lot of criminal elements in our societies, our communities here in Lane County that are emboldened because they don't feel like there's a credible threat from law enforcement to intervene in their criminal activity. But that aside, I came across a really interesting article. It's on the topic of the normalization of deviance, which is kind of in, this is the study of sociology. It first started to be, you know, seriously looked at in the context of health care, but later on has begun, you know, seen as something that's really relevant to a broader sort of context. And so, I wanted to share this article that was written by a senior pilot in the airline industry with some of his sort of insights on it, which I thought were pretty helpful. Pardon me one moment here. So he goes on in his article to kind of go over an incident that happened in the airline industry, which was a pretty serious accident, and goes over the facts surrounding the accident and how the industry responded to it. But then he gets to the kind of meat of the matter here, and he says, "The normalization of deviance. What I and probably you are most interested in is determining how well-respected, experienced, and accomplished pilots who've been through the best training that the industry has to offer reach the point where their performance is so bad that a CFI," which is an investigator, "wouldn't accept it from a primary student on their very first flight, a flight instructor. After reading through the litany of errors in Malbezen's presence in this accident report, it's tempting to brush off little things and say, 'This could never happen to me.' I sincerely believe doing so would be a grave mistake. It can absolutely happen to any of us, just as it has happened to plenty of well-trained, experienced, intelligent pilots, test pilots, people who are much better than you and I will ever be. But how? Clearly, the Bedford pilots were capable of following proper procedures and did so at carefully selected times at recurring training events, during ISBA audits, on check rides, and other various occasions. Agencies that are focusing on complacency as a root cause, but I believe that there might be a more detailed explanation. The true action and chain on this crash formed over a long, long period of time, decades most likely, through a process known as the normalization of deviance. The social normalization of deviance means that people within an organization become so accustomed to a deviant behavior or idea that they don't consider it as deviant, despite the fact that they far exceed their own rules for elementary safety. People grow more and more accustomed to deviant behavior the more and more it occurs. To people outside of an organization, the activities seem to be deviant. However, people within the organization do not recognize the deviance because it is seen as normal occurrence. Whether you're flying friends or family, pallets of cargo, or the general public, we all have the same basic goal to aviate without ending up in an embarrassing NTSB report, whose facts leave no doubt about how badly we screwed up. The normalization of deviance is like corrosion, an insidious, ever-present, naturally occurring enemy which will weaken and eventually destroy us if we let it." I just think that's relevant to our internal selves, how we think about the world. We need to always be trying to improve how we can combat that within ourselves, in our personal actions with each other, and in the organizations we are part of. So, in the year 2016 and beyond, please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. There's someone else signed up, so we'll move to Item 4, which is the Commissioner's response to public comments and/or issues and remonstrance. Do we have anybody that'd like to take this opportunity to speak? Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I just want to say to, I want to say thank you to Chair Bozovich and, or former Chair Bozovich, thank you for chairing Lane County Board last year. Really appreciate it. I thought the State of the County address was very good. I liked the terminology resilience. We've had to learn that and continue to learn that over and over again, and so I thought that was a good terminology, but also just a good illustration of where we are. And we may get hit, but we're bouncing right back up, and so I appreciate that. The other thing I want to mention is I had the honor of, so this next year, colleagues on the Air Commission of Transportation named me as the Chair this year. So I will be Chair of the Air Commission on Transportation. And following the passage of the transportation package in Washington, D.C., what this means is it looks like we're going to have added money for our STIP process. And so, the Act did forward what I call four excellent projects, two urban, two rural projects, six total, to the Super Act, which will be on the, will be on the 29th of this month. And I think we've got a really great opportunity to have those projects move forward. The two rural projects are in Veneta and, uh-oh. Veneta and...
Florence.
Florence. Thank you. Highway 101. Thank you. Veneta and Florence, and then urban projects, one in Eugene and one in Springfield. So I really appreciate the leadership that went on, not only from the MPC but the Act to move these projects forward. We're very confident they're going to be funded, and which will be very important and for each of the communities, and so looking forward to that. And I think overall, just the conversations that we're hearing on the economic development front, 2016 may be a pretty good year for the state and I think for Lane County. We're off the, we're following closely off the heels of two great announcements with Avago and Eugene, with Winnebago out in Junction City area, and these are good family wage jobs that'll be coming to Lane County. I appreciate that. I think there's going to be more to come this next year, and I look forward to not only the infrastructure that'll be presented in Lane County, but I think that you're going to see further investment and more jobs being created in Lane County as well. So I think the 2016, I'm looking to be a positive year for us. Thank you.
Thanks. Further comments? Okay. We'll move to Item 5, which is emergency business. I'm not aware of any.
No, we have none.
Okay. Item 6 is the consent calendar. All items listed here are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners, are enacted by one motion in the form of listed below. There will be no separate discussion on these items, provided, if discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately. You can go to LaneCounty.org and go to our business for the day, and you can click on each item and see what it consists of. So, we do have one item that was under the adjustment to be pulled, and it is Item 6C1. Is there any others? Commissioner Sorenson.
I'm looking for the number. It's the consent agenda item on the appointment of representatives to various committees, and that is B, 6B2.
Two?
I wanted to ask a question on one of them.
There's also the 6B1. There's two.
Okay.
Two items there. Do you want them both pulled?
No, I just had a question about 6B2.
Okay. Any other items?
No.
Okay. I look for a motion to approve as amended. Commissioner Bozovich?
So I'll move approval of the consent calendar without Items 6B2 and 6C1.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimous. We will start with, because I know we were planning on Item C1 to be pulled, I'd like to ask if legal counsel, Mr. Clark, could come up, and it was this item being requested by Commissioner Bozovich. I'd like to turn the mic over to Commissioner Bozovich.
Thank you. So this is an annual contract renewal that we have not looked closely at for four years. We had a significant discussion about this advertising item, and I believe there's been some possible changes in ORS around ability to do some of this online versus paying to be in print, and whether that might be a cost savings for the county. And we also haven't looked at our options on this particular item for four years. So I was hoping that with the agreement of the Commissioners that this could come back as a regular item on January 26th, with some report back from staff as to what our options are, that maybe we may be able to save some costs, and whether there's other newspapers that we can, and publications that might be able to be utilized for this advertising outside of the contract we've approved for the last four years, or three years, I should say.
Okay. Mr. Clark?
Yes, Commissioner. Of course, we are happy to come back. I can take a closer look at the options and bring that back to the board. I don't anticipate any problem with coming back on the 26th to do that. Excuse me. I'll note, just for the board's information now, that the order that's drafted with this matter is written with the word "may." That is, "may." The guard may be used for those three required publications that are listed in the order. Some of, and they list the ORS is there, some of which require publication in a newspaper, others, for example, the financial reports item, which is ORS 294.250, requires a publication of financial reports, but indicates that those can be done in the newspaper or on the Internet, and that's why that prescriptive language is used in the order. But be that as it may, I'm happy to come back and present the board with any options that may be there for other publications, other publication options. As I recall, the language we're looking at is in, primarily in Chapter 193, and I think it talks in terms of the newspaper that's best able to provide notice, or most likely to provide actual notice of the event, in which case that may end up being a registered guard just because of the general distribution. But I'll do some more work on that issue and bring it back to the board.
Commissioner Sorenson.
First of all, I'm curious whether the information in the memo, under analysis, is current. Do you know if that information is current?
I don't think it is, actually. I looked at this. It looks like we pulled this from years past, and I was in the midst, before I came down, of looking into, for example, the reference to Senate Bill on the repeal of 2005. That actually was done in '07, I think, and so this may be a recycled order that was used for years.
Okay. And secondly...
Or maybe it's a misquote in terms of numbers.
Okay. And secondly, on the legality of all this, do we have to make this decision at the first regular meeting of the calendar year? Is that why it's on the agenda for the first meeting of the year? Or are we required to make the decision today, and then we can make a different decision later, but we have to make the decision today?
I'm actually not sure of that. I think we need to make it before we do any required publications, whether that designation needs to be made at the first meeting or not.
All right. And then on the policy of this, I would say we undertook a review of this topic a few years ago, and it was quite controversial because the intent of the change was to designate Eugene Weekly as the newspaper of record, and then diminish the amount of publication in Eugene Weekly, and do a lot more online work. So the idea of the policy was intended to cut the cost and increase the amount of information out there. Well, that was controversial and was repealed, and that's why we have the usual board order in front of us, to have the registered guard do it. So, I'm wondering, I mean, while I'm in favor of deferring this action and getting a lot more information, is the bottom line, is that if the data is relatively accurate, then it does argue that, well, you know, the costs are lower. We're getting not quite, but a large readership of actual readers, and we may be able to take the difference and promote, and do more in terms of our promotion of our website, because more people are going to learn about the advertisements that we do by promoting our website. So that's the part that interests me. Now, this newspaper lobby does require us to pick a newspaper, so this statute, you know, predates the Internet by several, maybe even 100 years, so there's always been a strong relationship between the newspaper lobby, as wanting the government to publish things in newspapers of record. And we're not going to probably change that in the next couple of weeks, so we have to do the best we can. So, I'll just say, I'm looking forward to updated information in terms of the costs, and then maybe by way of additional information, what are we doing sort of online? It's not required to be in this, in this particular board order, but it's relevant for our discussion of how much do we want to spend on, you know, on advertising. And I would say, you know, Springfield Times, this is maybe, it's a low readership. It seems to be a high cost, so that might be at the bottom end of our decision, but if we could reduce the amount we're doing and do more online and promote our own website for the sale of government property or other notices that are required to publish, we might be further ahead. We might get more interest and more information out to the public. So, I'm totally in favor of delaying this and getting more information, both on the newspaper costs as well, and circulation, and on what we're doing on the Internet.
I can tell you if my memory is correct. I think when I originally was signing off on this, I checked with Christine Moody regarding the publication of financial reports, and as I recall, she indicated we're already doing that. So I think that most financial reports are being published on the Internet, which I think means on the Lane County website. And so I think we're doing our best to take advantage of what the law allows in that regard. But I think these other statutes actually require publication in a newspaper, so we need to select one at some point, yeah. And if the board has concerns, it's certainly you can adopt this order today if you want, and we can come back in two or three weeks' time with an order to supplement what you've done here, if that's the board's preference. Either way.
Other comments? So, maybe it would be easiest if we had a motion to direct staff to bring this back on the 26th with additional information to address the concerns and questions represented today?
So moved.
Second.
Pete got it?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Do we need to have any discussion? Is there any concern that we need to adopt a motion today, designation? Okay. Not seeing any? So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Passes unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Clark. So, the next item is Item B2. It's Order 16-1-05-05 in the matter of appointing representatives to the various committees and agencies. Commissioner Sorenson.
I just noticed that among the county-wide external appointments was the Lane Workforce Partnership Board, and that has, that's currently listed for you, Commissioner Stewart. And at one time, I was the representative to the Lane Workforce Partnership Board. Then the Board of Commissioners decided to have the county administrator be the designee, and now it looks like for the last few years, you've been the Workforce Partnership Board representative. I'm wondering if I could be the board rep for that, and I'm not overly burdened with these appointments, assignments, so I think I could take that on.
Okay.
I appreciate that. I don't have a problem with it. I think you're pretty well aware of the new structure of the Workforce Partnership. We have essentially three bodies that have been created, and one of the bodies, I'm currently Chair, but I don't think Ms. Payne would probably, or the current board members would mind either you serving as Chair or moving into a role and then electing another Chair. So I'm fine with that and am open to making that adjustment if that's what you would like to do.
Well, I didn't know about you being Chair, so if you want to finish that out, that's fine, too.
I mean, it's fine because they, I was the one with the most experience that they put there, so you've been on the board before, so I don't think that that's an issue with me or Ms. Payne, so.
Okay. Well, I'd be happy to do it, then.
Commissioner Bozovich?
Thank you. I'm kind of glad that Commissioner Sorenson pulled this, and I support his desire to be on the Workforce Partnership Board, but I'd noticed there was a typo in here. The Human Services Commission should list both myself and Commissioner Farr, and it only listed me. I think it was when they were trying to correct, you know, when we went from having a board member and a budget committee member to two board members was what they were attempting to correct there, and they forgot to put, relist Commissioner Farr.
I thought that was a leadership decision.
No, it was just a typo. I just now noticed, so.
Okay. So we have a correction for the Human Services Commission representatives, which would include Farr, and then replacing myself as the representative on the Workforce Partnership Board with Commissioner Sorenson. Are there any other items? Commissioner Farr?
Well, I was going to mention this, but we did open it. Our Legislative Committee, let's see, what is that officially? Just Legislative. Notice that we have the two rural Commissioners on that. Is there a particular reason we have two rural Commissioners on that?
No, it's just the way it was volunteered. I'd be willing to allow you to replace me if that's what you'd like to do.
No, I'm not particularly interested in replacing. But in the past, I've occasionally sat in the back row of the Legislative Committee meetings and feel uncomfortable, because with three Commissioners in the room, even though I'm not a voting member of the committee, I feel a little uncomfortable with three Commissioners in the room. So, I guess as we move forward with whatever legislative agenda is prescribed, that we need to determine how is it that the discussion occurs at the Legislative Committee, and does that represent both the metropolitan and the rural part of the county?
Okay.
I would just make one comment, that the legislative priorities always come to the full board for discussion and approval, so as with any committee action, there's committee discussion. I believe the Legislative Committee has noticed, publicly noticed. So any discussion and priorities and goals and areas that we're going to be pursuing as part of our legislative agenda will ultimately come to the full board. as part of our legislative agenda will ultimately come to the full board for approval before we enact it and pursue it.
And thank you for that clarification, Mr. Mokraski. And I understand that. That doesn't diminish the fact that the main discussion occurs in the Legislative Committee by the time that the recommendations are made to the board. And by the time they come to the board, it's not always particularly simple or particularly convenient to make any recommendations for changes. So, that's just my concern there.
Okay. Other comments?
Well, just that the assignments, you know, have to be looked at each year and different people have different responsibilities. People are running for different elective offices. They've got, you know, we make the decision about who's the board chair and then the board chair, you know, had, in your case, lots of committee assignments, being board chair, a lot more work. So, I think all of this has to be balanced. In terms of the Legislative Committee, it currently, I would agree with you and Mr. Mokraski, that's just the way it's been for the last few years is the two rural commissioners. And if there's an interest in having that balanced in terms of rural, urban, then I would support putting Mr. Farr on the committee. And if you want to lighten your load further, I don't know, but you're getting to have your job as board chair in the whole thing. So, maybe you like being on the committee, too. I don't know.
I'm just happy to serve. When this item, I believe Ms. Jones forwarded it to all the board members for comments on any potential changes. So, my understanding, this was just really a duplicate of what we had in the past. So, Commissioner Farr, if you would like to?
No, I'm not particularly interested in any change. I think status quo is just fine. But just bearing in mind that just a deliberative process before we make a recommendation as to what is carried to the legislature, whether it be in the upcoming short session or down the road in the regular sessions. It's important that there's a balance of our presentation there. And I know Mr. Kyler is, has been absolutely stellar at making his presentations and absolutely stellar at carrying our agendas to both the Oregon Legislature and to Congress. So, I have no complaints regarding the mechanism, just an alert that it needs to be something that's very deliberative in the process. And, you know, the only change that I had noted on here was that I'd been dropped from the Human Services Commission and I wasn't going to say anything about that.
Just a mistake because last month, when I asked in an open session here for board members to look at the list and see if they wanted any changes and one of the things I noted to Diana, Ms. Jones, was that she needed to add me to HSC. I said add, not replace. And I just noticed that she accidentally had done a replace versus an add. So, I'm kind of glad it got pulled so we could fix that.
Well, in that I first started serving on the Human Services Commission in 1995 when Ruth Bascom appointed me, I really have enjoyed doing it, so I'm glad that you hadn't made that decision separately.
No, no.
Commissioner Liken, then Commissioner Sorenson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, since the list went out, there has been a significant change in the Housing Policy Board. And this just occurred very recent and that is Springfield has made the decision not to be part of the intergovernmental agreement. So, right now, the Housing Policy Board literally is Lane County and the City of Eugene. And this includes, apparently Springfield's staff will not be involved as well. So, what I'm going to suggest right now, stay tuned, we're going to continue having discussions, but this may be, it may come up eventually as a separate, different name. Where we go from here, I'm not sure. And so, this will be, I think, a very fluid conversation about what the future of the Housing Policy Board holds, where we go from here. But this has been very recent, actually since the list went out, that Springfield served notice that they will not be a part of that intergovernmental agreement. So, and I bring that up because I do serve on the Housing Policy Board, but there has actually been conversations about potentially maybe moving this even into the Poverty and Homelessness Board as in just combining it as one. But right now, I would say it's very fluid and we don't know yet.
Okay. Commissioner Sorenson, then Commissioner Farr.
I was going to ask a question. Oh, the matter of having more than, you know, two commissioners attending committee meetings. In the past, when we've given these notices of committee meetings where there's two commissioners, we've normally sent in the notice that if three commissioners attend, then it'll be considered a public meeting. Are we still doing that? So, that when Commissioner Farr attends the legislative meeting in last year or the year before and you two have been there, then that's considered a public meeting?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
My understanding that we still have that policy and haven't implemented and doing that.
Yeah, okay. So, if, you know, things get interesting at the Legislative Committee level and there's more interest than normal and, you know, three or four commissioners want to go to the meeting, not a problem in going.
Right.
Okay. That's been my assumption. So, I don't think it's a problem at all for commissioners to get in on any of the committees that are meeting if they want to follow the agenda and attend. And that often will form the basis of a decision to move a commissioner into a particular committee assignment because if they're attending and the other one isn't, then that's often a rationale for that. Okay, thanks so much.
Mr. Farr?
Thank you. And Commissioner Sorenson, thank you for bringing that up and making that clarification. That, once again, does clarify things for me. I just wanted to point out that, you know, we have a number of the advisory committees here and this was going to go through as a consent item. I would not have made, had that discussion at all about it, but since Commissioner Sorenson pulled it, it did give us an opportunity to talk about it. You know, Mr. Mokraski, this last year, the Parks Advisory Committee took on a new role, became pretty significant in its scope of work in subcommittee form. And it was really very deliberative work that took place predominantly by citizen members, not by elected officials on the Parks Advisory Committee. I would, I have a personal goal that each of our advisory committees takes on a similar role of importance. Our Roads Advisory Committee, for instance, our Animal Services Advisory Committee. Many of the times, the committee meetings, if you look at them, they're pretty bland and they really have a non-action agenda. Additionally, it's been pointed out to me on a couple of occasions that the meetings, the agendas for the meetings aren't very easy for the public to get a hold of. So, I hope we have a focus this year on making our advisory committees more significant than they have since I became a commissioner. I'm not sure what it was like in the past, so I cannot comment on that. But I think the model that the Parks Advisory Committee put forward this year was very commendable. And I think that if you look at the work of the Mental Health Advisory Committee, for instance, it's pretty commendable. But some of the other committees, we don't hear much from them, not much comes out of the meetings. And that's not across the board by any means. You know, we have the Area Commission on Transportation, which is pretty significant, and we have MPC, which makes recommendations. But I'm hoping that this year we can have, make further, greater use of the committees and make greater use of the valuable time that the citizen members of those committees put in so that they feel that it's significant, the contribution that they're making to the, to the order of the agenda, the work of the board itself.
Mr. Mokraski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, excuse me, Commissioner Farr, to your point, I think that's a great idea and we'll have some conversations with staff about the potential. I actually think it'd be interesting to have, see about having every advisory committee report, provide a report to the board, even if it's just in written form that the board has provided that and that we as staff and with the chair of those advisory committees come forward and have that discussion. I think there may be some value, we could talk to the agenda team about this, in sort of spreading those out in the first four months of the calendar year in advance of the budget so that as the budget committee and the board is going through the budget process, that you've actually heard from the advisory committees on the work that they're doing and the issues that they're looking at from a citizen perspective. So, great thought and we will have that conversation at the staff level and bring that back to you. I also, Mr. Chair, wanted to add one other clarification, if I may. Under countywide external multi-jurisdiction committees, the South Lamont Economic Development Commission, the county administrator is in the bylaws, I believe, as a member of SWEDCO. So, it may be, I know we have all commissioners here, but I think it was intended to reflect any appointees and representatives of the board to those. So, we may want to add the county administrator to that because I do serve as, along with Commissioner Liken, as a voting member of that board. And then finally, I would say, you know, really appreciate that Commissioner Sorenson asked to pull this and the discussion has been really good. I think we've done some cleanup and I'll talk to our staff about, maybe next year when we do this, putting it on the regular calendar because I think it's a good conversation for the board to have every year as opposed to putting it on consent that you have a discussion and review it. So, this, I think, was a good format to clean up some items and on an annual basis would be a good way to have the discussion.
I'd like to add to Commissioner Farr's comments about the, these other committees, the Parks Advisory Committee and the Roads Advisory Committee. And we have a list of them and that was the item, that was item B1. And the significance between the two of that, I'd just point out that in the advisory committees, we have an advisory role. We're kind of a liaison. We don't have a vote. So, I'm a liaison to the Fair Board Committee, attend the meeting. I don't have a vote in the Fair Board meeting, but I attend it as a liaison. So, I think the differences between the two orders. That order, we're in liaison position, advisory. And then on the other committees, we're actually voting members to make recommendations that come to the board. So, and I do agree that it doesn't, in my opinion, make these committees any less valuable. They're very important to giving us guidance and appreciate the fact that, you know, we used to get, years back, we used to get a year-end or at least a yearly report from each committee as to what they accomplished, what they were setting out to do and for the next year. And it would be nice that maybe we highlighted that, too, at a higher level because I think that still takes place. Mr. Sorenson.
The latter part of what Commissioner Stewart just mentioned, namely that we, I think there still is a requirement that all advisory committees provide an annual report. A few years ago, when we had maybe as many as 50 advisory committees, we found that a number of them were not reporting, so we got rid of them if they didn't report. And a few that were active but didn't do the report actually wrote the report because they were at risk of being eliminated. So, I think it is a good idea to maybe put all of the advisory committee reports in one place on the board website so that the public and the board can easily see what's been the annual report for the last few years of any given committee. And that also will highlight the fact that these committees are advisory to the Board of Commissioners. They're not just meeting among themselves for the purposes of discussion only. They're there to advise the board. So, I think highlighting the annual report requirement and taking the, maybe the last two years' worth of reports and putting them up on the board website would be a way to kind of get the idea out there that it's important, not just to the committee and the specific committee's responsibilities, but it's important for the public and the board to know that they're there to provide advice to the board.
Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you. I just wanted to get back to the attendance of more than two board members to one of these committees. All of our meetings are noticed. They are public meetings. These are, you know, whether two commissioners, one commissioner, or three commissioners are there, they're all notice meetings. And in the notice, it specifically states, "Members of the Board of Commissioners not assigned to a particular standing committee may also attend and thus a quorum of the board may be in attendance. However, no formal action will be taken by the board." So, it's very clearly stated in the notice and they are notice meetings and the public is, can attend these meetings. So, I just want to make clear, you know, that there is, the notice is in accordance with state law around public meetings and it also is pretty clear that actual action does not happen in these committees, only, you know, pre-work before it comes to the board for real deliberation and action. So, just wanted to clarify that notification and the fact that it's anticipated that there could be more than two board members at one of these committee meetings.
Okay. Any further comments? Well, then I would entertain a motion to approve Order 16-01-5-05 in the matter of appointing representatives to various committees and agencies with the amendment that includes Commissioner Farr being added to the HSC Committee and replacing myself with Commissioner Sorenson on the Lane Workforce Partnership Board.
And noting that Commissioner, I mean, that county administrator, Mokraski, is a standing member of the SWEDCO.
Okay, yes, included in that.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimous. So, that concludes our business on the consent calendar and the pulled items. We'll move on to, I believe it's item seven, which is county administration. First item, A, is announcements. Mr. Mokraski, any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a few here. First of all, I want to echo the comments of the commissioners and thank Commissioner Bozovic and Stewart for your leadership over the past years, chair and vice chair. And there's been a lot of work, absolutely, and a lot of progress that we've made. And I'm not sure that everybody in our organization or throughout the community understand and appreciate the amount of time and commitment that the chair and vice chair have to make in setting the agendas each week and consulting with county administrator and staff on various issues and attending events and speaking on behalf of the county. So, it is a big commitment and really appreciate the work that you did to provide leadership for the board and the county and the support that you provided to our staff over the past year. And of course, we all look forward to working with Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Farr over the next year in your leadership roles. I also want to thank Commissioner Bozovic again for a wonderful state of the county yesterday. We had a really good turnout. I think it was almost standing room capacity here despite the weather, tough weather conditions. And I mean, you know, the folks that we had from Florence and Vanita and Crestwell throughout the community, that Mayor Henry from Florence came all the way from Florence yesterday despite the weather conditions, I think is a testament of the partnerships that we're building with the cities and communities throughout Lane County. And again, it was a wonderful state of the county, a great message. I talked to a lot of our staff and folks from the community and our partner agencies after the event yesterday and they really appreciated the nod towards the collaboration and partnerships that we're pursuing and the various work that our staff is doing throughout our organization. I also want to note that we did a, like a 10-minute video, a state of the county video. Each commissioner provided comments for that as well as our DA and sheriff and some of our staff. That is going to be posted online today. So, go to our website and you can check out the 10-minute state of the county video that kind of recaps our progress over the past year and talks about challenges and goals for the next year. You can also view the state of the county address online, of course, and find all the other updates and news releases and things that we have there. Also want to share with the board, as you heard, several public comments at prior board meetings in late 2015 from Mr. Magnuson. And just to report back to you that I was able to meet with Mr. Magnuson in late December along with Assessor Coles. We had a very good meeting with Mr. Magnuson and his wife. Since that time, Mr. Magnuson's partition has been approved. So, we received the verification that was needed for, to move that partition forward. So, it has been approved. We had a very respectful, thoughtful and productive meeting with Mr. Magnuson and I've not heard any follow-ups since then. So, I'm pleased and hopeful that the majority of those issues have been resolved. of those issues have been resolved. Last week, I had the ability to attend a meet and greet with Dr. Kincaid, who's joined us, you know, from Peace Health, and we're just really excited about continuing to add to the quality of our leadership team in Lane County. And I was really impressed at the opportunity to sit with Dr. Magnuson and our Health and Human Services staff and the staff and Dr. Kincaid. Sit with Dr. Kincaid and hear his experience and vision for our community health centers and engage with the great staff in our community health centers there. You know, I heard from him a clear understanding of the coordination of care that's happening between primary care and behavioral health within our community health centers and throughout the community, the quality of care, and he in particular talked about leveraging resources from within the large Department of Health and Human Services, from public health and all of the other areas, and then throughout Lane County. He had a great appreciation for the support of the Board of Commissioners and his relationship with Commissioners in the past, working on critical health issues. And so I, again, was really impressed that he not only understands what is needed to operate these six community health centers that we have and provide the outstanding access and quality of care that we have in our community, but he also understands the larger, broader picture of our organization, our community, and how the different pieces intertwine. So we're excited to welcome him to our team, and a great credit to the staff in Health and Human Services, to Director Alicia Hayes and her staff, Ron Jelm, who is the manager of our community health centers for recruiting Dr. Kincaid, and we look forward to his great leadership. And finally, Mr. Chair, just want to share with the board an update, because there was some reporting on the voluntary separation incentive program recently, and we did conclude the date, we opened that, we negotiated with two of our bargaining units in Public Works, 626 and Admin Pro. We offered this option out for all of our bargaining units. Admin Pro and 626 took us up on it, and we also applied it to our non-represented employees to look at voluntary separation incentive program from October 15 through December 15, so that is now closed. So I want to just report to you on the numbers that we have, 31 individuals applied, 31 of those applications were approved, so all of them were approved. They all demonstrated net cost savings. So while some of the reporting has caused some confusion, we've received some feedback of people thinking there's a cost to this. There is no cost, there's actually a net savings to the voluntary separation incentive program of around $560,000 in one year. That is, we feel confident that those numbers are solid because we are specifying the step, the pay range that the individuals can be hired, those positions can be hired in at, and the time period that they have to be held vacant in, and we have safeguards that we put in place to ensure that that happens, that the savings that we're projecting actually comes to fruition. I'd also say it's a conservative estimate, because we haven't found the health insurance cost savings for the new hires that we bring on board, because it would be too difficult to do that. So we will report back to the board at later dates, as with our health insurance changes, moving to a self-funded health plan, to report to you and give you the experience and the data that we collect as we implement these initiatives. But I just wanted to share that to date, we believe this has been a very successful initiative in generating a cost savings over the next year of over half a million dollars across all county funds. Most of that's going to happen in Public Works and in the Road Fund, but it's spread out through various funds there. And we'll report more on the VSIP program, as well as a vacancy review process that we now put in place so that all vacant positions in distressed funds, such as the General Fund and the Road Fund, all vacant positions from now until the budget will be reviewed by a team of staff at our Budget and Human Resources Office and ultimately approved by me. And this is simply to make sure that we have review, discussion, and accountability for all the positions that we're filling in areas where we are struggling financially. So I think that's an industry best practice. We will talk about this more next week at our leadership team meeting to kick off the budget, and I'd invite anyone from our organization and the community to attend next Wednesday at 9:00 AM at our Public Works facility, the Goodson Room off of Delta Highway. With that, Mr. Chair, ask if there are any questions.
I don't have any questions, but I really appreciate you highlighting Dr. Kincaid and the new role that he has for the county. If my memory is correct, Mr. Kincaid, I first met him when he was practicing in Cottage Grove, so I've known him for a while, on and off, got to, our paths have crossed, and most recently, when I've attended several of the Health and Human Services efforts towards planning and goal visioning and some different training sessions. He's, if my memory is correct, been very engaged and a very productive member in helping, you know, improve healthcare in Lane County. So I agree with you 100%, what a great score for Lane County and an addition, and looking forward to working with him as he moves our health centers forward. So thank you for that. Other comments or questions for the administrator? Okay. We do have about five minutes before our time certain, so I'd like to, item eight, County Council, I don't believe there's any announcements, is that correct?
That's correct.
That was what was reported. We'll go to item nine, County Commissioners business. Do we have any announcements for the commissioners? Commissioner Lichen?
Just one, and because of the fact this will occur before our next meeting, but so Mayor Christine Lumberg will be delivering her State of the City address on Monday the 11th, and that is 5:30 at Wildish Theater in Springfield. So I'm personally not an Alabama or Clemson fan, so even though that falls exactly the time of the national championship, so I'm likely to be attending the State of the City address instead. And if there's a game to be looked at, maybe the second half will be exciting, so we'll keep it at that. Thank you.
Other announcements? All right. I'll look to Ms. Case, so are we ready? Do we have everybody you're expecting?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then let's go ahead and do our 10 o'clock time certain. It's Order 16-01-05-17 in the matter of approving and awarding tourism special projects, sponsorships for 2016, authorizing the county administrator to sign sponsorship agreement letters. So Ms. Case, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Stewart and Commissioners. This is not something that, unfamiliar to all of you, this is an annual award that the board gets to release every December or January. I have here with me two members of your Tourism Council, Nancy Miller, who I believe is Commissioner Sorenson's appointee, and John Brown, who I believe is Commissioner Farr's appointee, if memory serves. Jody Rolnick was going to be here today, who is Commissioner Stewart's appointee, but she sends her regrets, she's iced in and cannot make it this morning. So briefly here, the board is being asked to approve the 2016 Tourism Special Project Grant Awards, as recommended by your Tourism Council, two of which are present, and as soon as I give my brief comments, I'll let both John and Nancy address the board as well. We released this invitation to apply on October 1st, and there was a 30-day window for folks to submit their application. As you might recall, the special projects grant program is funded by transient room tax funding, that's a specific pot of money for these grant awards and projects that enhance tourism in Lane County. Your Tourism Council spends a great deal of time reviewing, this year, I mean, 31 applications that were submitted, and the amount total requested was over $195,000. We had $50,000 to allocate this year. Normally, we do have $100,000, but due to some budget, looking forward with some of our budget asks that we expect to receive in the next year or so, we did reduce that to $50,000. We were able to increase it by $11,000. Unfortunately, two projects that were awarded in the previous year were not, they weren't able to be held, and so the money was returned. That gave us $11,000 more to spend, so that helped. And then at the end of the day, the Tourism Council is strongly recommending that the board release $63,500 in funding to fund the projects that they believed were ready and worthy of these funds. So we met in early December, I believe, spent a number of hours going through the projects, had some really great discussion, made sure these projects really met the intent of the program, and that is to enhance tourism and increase overnight stays in Lane County. I believe the Tourism Council did a really great job at not only finding those projects that met that intent, but also dispersing them geographically very equitably across the county. They also gave very thoughtful feedback for staff to provide back to applications that weren't funded, so that they can perhaps do a better job next year with their application and do a better job at meeting the needs of the criteria and what the board expects. So with that, John or Nancy, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you did a really good job describing everything. It was an interesting process, and it was very gratifying to be able to spread it across the county. We really were looking for advertising, you know, media exposure on many of these projects. I don't know, I think we did, I think it's a good representation, and I think we did a pretty thorough job.
Yes, I'd like to thank you also for allowing us to be your representatives. I've done this for several years, as have Nancy and Jody, and the vetting that we did this year, it's, we're getting better and better, and I know that's a self-serving statement, but staff is also getting better and better. And, you know, I would be one of the first ones to come up here and tell you what wasn't working, but I'll tell you what is working, and I feel very confident about the way we vetted these things and the way we judged them is the way you want it to be done. Like I say, we were able to give feedback to the people, there's some great ones that we couldn't support because they had some problems with their applications and things, and we're going to get back to those, staff is, and say, "Look, if you do this, this is how you get through." Because it's wonderful to see all of these things that are happening, and this little bit of seed money, I mean, I can cite some examples in Blue River, the Chainsaw Festival and things like that, Oak Ridge, they have the lawnmower races. I know when I first saw that, it didn't sound good, but that thing brought a lot of people from outside the state, and we helped them last year. So although that may look on the surface that it's not worthy, it is worthy, and that the goal is to bring heads and beds, and I think that's what we do, and I think this is a good use of the resource. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So any questions? And actually, before I do that, I just want to add, so we have your five-member Tourism Council that reviews each application. We also bring in either Carrie Westland, or this year it was Janice Ross from Travel Lane County. Staff here, we're not destination marketers, that's not what we do on a daily basis, but Travel Lane County does. They've been a great resource, both for staff and the Tourism Council, I believe, in really understanding the economic impact of some of these applications. So they weren't able to be here today, but just wanted to let you know, we are taking advantage of that guidance as well.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions for members? Mr. Farr?
Just a comment, this means thank you for the presentation. John, Nancy, thanks for being here today, and thank you for your service. You know, Mr. Mokra Hyskey, we talked a little bit ago about the significance of our advisory committees, and this is one advisory committee that really has demonstrated a great use of their asset, great use of the time, and by making good recommendations to the board that I, that go forward without any significant amendment. You know, so it's pretty exciting to see a committee that is effectively doing work, not unlike the Parks Committee last year, as I mentioned earlier. And, you know, John, Nancy, you guys have better things to do with your time. Maybe you don't have better things to do with your time, but you certainly have other things to do with your time, I know that. The fact that you take your private time without pay, without compensation, and often without thanks even, and make these valuable recommendations, it's, it means a great deal to this Board of Commissioners and a great deal to the fact that we're able to make more deliberative decisions based upon the work that you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. If I may, Commissioner Farr, I'd like to say that there is a little bit of self-serving in this, because we get to find out about all these wonderful events that, you know, I mean, and that I would have probably never known of, and I get to spread the word as well. And to see how $3,000 can leverage $800,000, that there's an example in there this year that was amazing about the leverage, about what our spending the $3,000 bucks would do and how much revenue they bring to this county. So thank you.
Outstanding, thank you. Others?
I guess, I too would just like to say thank you as a member of other bodies that gifts money to organizations and applications like, well, tomorrow, Commissioner Bozovic and I will be in Florence reviewing applications for the Three Rivers Foundation, and I don't know if people understand the time commitment and the effort it takes to do it. I mean, you said, I think, 130?
There were 31 applications, which is less than normal, because of the funding wasn't as significant as we normally have. It was $195,000 worth of asks.
Okay, okay.
For $50,000.
I appreciate that, but still, that's, you know, a lot of applications review, and I really appreciate, you know, the members taking the time to be able to make comments so that folks can reapply and be successful in the future, because, you know, we all want to help as many people as possible and have the best and greatest impact, and so thank you for taking that time. It's very, very important, and I appreciate your participation and, you know, the entire committee.
Sorry.
All right. So we have an order of 16-01-05-17 in the matter of approving and awarding tourism special project sponsorships for 2016 and authorizing the county administrator to sign sponsorship agreement letters.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Farr.
I move passage of Order 16-01-05-17 in the matter of approving and awarding tourism special projects.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments? Commissioner Sorenson?
I just wanted to thank everybody involved in this process. I'm sure that everybody involved recognizes the significance of the leveraging of this money. That, to me, is the most significant part of it, because we know there's a lot of people out there working hard to make their events known, and they're trying as hard as they can to get people to attend, and they're very worthwhile, but they need a little bit of help to leverage that, and I think that's one of the great things about using this money for these purposes, and for the volunteers that are willing to come in and sift through these applications and help people, you know, improve their applications by giving feedback to staff, and then making the difficult decisions about how to recommend it to us. It's just been a great, great program. I appreciate. Who were the other volunteers besides these two nice folks?
Jody Rolnick, who was...
Who was iced in.
Who was iced in today. Dwight Kuhn, from Commissioner Bozovic's appointee, and Holly Stanley, who is Commissioner Lichen's appointee.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, thanks to all of you present, but also to those who were able to come and who did work on this effort. Thanks.
Great. Mr. Farr?
Just briefly, you know, about four years ago, Commissioner Sorenson and I sat in the bike road over there, listened to your discussion of the, I believe it was the regatta on Dexter Lake, and how passionate you were about bringing the tourism in for that. And, you know, the thing that I'm going to point out to Nancy, to John, is that if you look around right now, before you came here, we had a fairly sparse audience, you guys increased the audience by about 700%. It was amazing, thank you very much.
And on that note, I really, you know, yesterday I got the privilege to travel on Fox Hollow, and I think the Millers still live at Fox Hollow.
Yes.
And I have to tell you, the conditions on that road were less than favorable, and I would imagine they were probably not much better today. So thank you so much for trekking in here and being a part of today's conversation.
May I say one other thing?
Yes.
I really appreciate the fact that this grant is available to small startup groups, because it just shows the support of our community for the, these groups, and that's just so important. I don't know, it's an important thing, and so I'm really proud to be part of this whole process. Thank you.
Well, and I appreciate that comment very much, because most of these items are just an idea, and we're not too sure whether or not they're going to be successful or not. I mean, as John pointed out, the Carving Festival up to McKenzie was just an idea, some very motivated people. We were able to support that in the last three years. It's been an incredible event for the community. And that's what's really nice, is to be able to support the idea and see it hopefully flourish and take its course to wherever it goes, so I appreciate that. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Affinamus? Sorry, John, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving along pretty good here. Our next item, I believe, is 9B. It's a discussion on possible action. It's a letter of support for rural airports in Clamath County. This item, I believe, was forwarded to all the commissioners. Commissioner Lichen?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it was, and it was a, actually a request from Commissioner Kelly Minty-Morse from Clamath County, and really, the idea is just trying to get support from counties throughout the state. This is a great opportunity, I think, for the Crater Lake Airport, I think what they call it, the regional airport. We obviously have a very successful regional airport here, and they have a really good opportunity that's being presented to them, and they're just asking their fellow colleagues from around the state just to provide letters of support and by refederalizing and making sure the TSA is going to be part of this, part of the airport. Otherwise, this could be a really golden opportunity for the airport to miss out. As many folks who've flown into Clamath, Clamath has a, has, it's a unique airport, has a very long runway, and it's a, I think it's close to 10,000 feet, so it actually can accommodate just about any kind of plane that is manufactured today, but this is a good opportunity for them. So she forwarded this and asked if Lane County would provide a letter of support as well.
Other comments?
I personally would like to see us send a support letter. Of course, we don't have one before, so we have what Clamath County has sent, but would appreciate if we had some direction to staff to create a support letter similar to the Clamath County in support of their effort.
Still moved?
Second. Bozovich, did you have?
I was going to move, but he beat me to it.
Any further comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, pass is 5-0. 9C is our agenda team request and work session request. Commissioner Bozovich?
Thank you. So back in, I think, 2012, the board made a decision in a lot of our budget cuts that year to eliminate paying dues to the Oregon Coastal Zone Management Association. So at that time, I stopped attending the meetings because we weren't dues-paying members. We just recently got an invoice for this upcoming year's dues, and they've reduced them significantly, trying to help us put it into our budget, and I wanted to bring this to the board as a possible interim change. We'll have to find someplace to pay the dues from, whether it's, you know, the board's contingency fund or some other spot. It's an organization that has been significantly involved in the territorial sea plan and also with the marine preserves and that planning process, and it's basically, it's, you know, stakeholders from the fishing industries, from all the counties along the coast, we're the only county on the coast that does not participate in this organization. So I was, you know, with the reduced dues, I was wondering if the board wanted to reconsider joining this organization, and if so, then we have to provide some direction to staff, and it would come back as a board order at a later meeting, possibly even next meeting, seeing that the dues are really due now in January. So I'm just looking for a little bit of discussion around that item, and maybe so we can provide either direction to staff, or is the, you know, the decision to withdraw from the organization one we want to stick with and just save the, I think, what was the revised bill, $4,000?
I believe so.
Yeah, and I think it used to be $8,500, so they've significantly reduced the amount they're asking for some dues.
Comments?
I'm fine. I would offer a head nod to bring this back and for discussion, or just send it to the agenda team and you all figure it out and make a recommendation to bring it back to the board.
Mr. Sorenson?
I would be fine with having a consent calendar item put on the next meeting.
Mr. Farr?
It looks like we have unanimous support to have this come back in an order on the consent calendar.
So that?
And work with the agenda team to.
Identify a funding source?
Yeah. Identify funding? Or work with staff to identify potential funding sources.
And then in addition to that, do we want to also let the administrator know to plan for this in the upcoming year's budget for the next, you know, because the next set of dues will come in the next budget as they do budget preparation?
I think that might be a good conversation to have. I mean, it might be we pay 50% of the dues and get us onto our budget cycle and, you know, have a conversation with the director of the OCZMA?
Yeah, OCZMA, Oregon Coastal Zone Management Association.
Yeah. Mr. Mokaiwski?
Yeah, I think if, we'll bring it back to the board, you approve that item, then we have the direction we need to include in the budget.
Yeah. Okay.
And if I can just add one more, if we are going to be bringing it back to prove at least even a half year, if it's okay with the board, I would request that I be designated as the representative for the county to the organization, seeing the coastal zone is my district.
For me, that goes without speaking, but.
But I think we have to have.
It sounds like we have agreement that you would.
Seeing we already passed the annual assignments, this would be out of the ordinary, so.
Okay. So we have agreement on that item? Is there another, any other agenda item requests at this point? Okay. So item 10 is executive session. It's my understanding we don't have an executive session, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Item 11 is other business. Do we have any other business before we recess for the afternoon?
Well, we're talking a bunch today. Maybe that'll get more active. So at this point, we will recess. We have a 2 o'clock time certment, so we'll reconvene here in Harris Hall this afternoon at 2:00 PM for our public hearing on the proposed OSU Extension Service Property Tax Levy. With that, we are in recess.